Let me open, let me open a public hearing meeting, City Council, City of Pearland for, City of Pearland for September the ninth, I can't believe it, September the ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Moving on our agenda to call water, public hearing for only proposed two thousand nineteen tax rate with the two thousand nineteen as two thousand twenty budget period. And at this point, I'll move to item number three, ask for staff review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you stated tonight, the only order of business is a required public hearing, number two. We've had several budget discussions leading up to tonight and a lot of work, but this is the public hearing on just the property tax rate. And again, just for anybody else that entered, we are not going to have the joint public hearing and the planning and zoning tonight. We don't have, we're going to have to reschedule that. So this is the only item on the council agenda for this evening. And so we will announce when the zoning matters will be held at a later date. But as to the budget, we, our city is dependent upon for operations upon a couple of different sources of revenue for the general fund, property taxes and sales tax from the bulk of that. And this is the public hearing to set that rate. And just to remind and bring everybody up to speed, Mr. McCarter's got an abbreviated presentation and asked Mr. McCarter to go through that now.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time tonight. My name's John McCarter, Assistant Finance Director for the City of Pearland. I do have a short presentation for tonight. Anyone in the audience or following along at home who wants to have access to this information, you can log on to pearlandtx.gov/fy20budget. It's also posted on the agenda as well. So diving right in, taking a look at the tax rate, as Mr. Pearson stated, today's, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold the second of two public hearings on our tax rate. This year, we are proposing point seven four one two one two as our tax rate, that is cents per one hundred dollars valuation. That is at the rollback rate and also at the maximum that was voted on by council back in August. Looking at the components of that, there are two pieces. One is the debt obligations, that is all of our bonds, certificates of obligation, general obligation debt widely. And then the operations side, which funds the day-to-day operations of most of the city's operating departments. Probably the best place to start is with the taxable value. This is kind of what drives everything that we're looking at here. Revaluations in existing properties plus new growth have led to about eight point five billion dollar increase, I'm sorry, total. That's a four point three percent increase over last year, slightly less than we had anticipated, but still positive growth there. These values are based on the certified for Brazoria and Fort Bend. We did receive the Harris County portions in late August. They're slightly higher than we anticipated, which is nice, but not significantly enough that we want to adjust the budget at this point. Diving in a little bit further to the property tax base, what we have here is essentially a breakout of the house counts and how much each individual home moved from last year's valuation. So that's really composed of two pieces. You have your base value, which is the value on the home, and then the actual rate, which is what we're here talking about tonight. As you can see, the vast majority, seventy percent of these moved to dead parcels, they changed less than five percent, so five percent or less. This is less than we've seen last year. We've seen homes in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, a lot higher up on that, and we see a slow decrease of that over time. So as we're talking about the rate today, the majority of those valuations changed about five percent. Looking at the overall tax historically, we're looking at a three point two cent increase on the overall tax rate. Again, that's the rollback rate, which is eight percent over the effective tax rate. The twenty-five million dollars in collections for general fund is responsible for a portion of our operations, while the thirty-six million dollars on the debt side, again, that covers our debt obligations for this fiscal year. When we look at the actual levy itself, it's about a six point nine percent overall increase from the FY nineteen revenue levy projection. And it's also worth noting on the operations side here, we don't quite know how they're going to administer, they being the state, the three point five percent cap, so we kind of took our best guess at that. So that's the operations side. Also, on the debt side, this is the lower forty-five cents that was shared last week when we were here. That's the last two pages of your packet as well. So looking at each of these components over the last couple of fiscal years, we can see from FY eighteen, it's showing up here on the board, roughly forty-one percent is directed towards our operations side, that's up slightly from last year. Then on the debt service side, we have about fifty-eight percent, slightly down from last year, that overall three cent, give or take change. Most of that comes from the operations side, which again is at that rollback rate for this fiscal year. We did provide annotated worksheets from the county tax assessor collector's office. They're in the front pocket of your binder when it was presented on August first. This is the calculation that goes in behind the scenes to get us to that rollback effective rates. That debt service portion is increasing just a bit on the, on the debt service side. The reduction to the effective tax rate would drop us roughly two point seven million dollars in revenue, which would have to be realized on the expenditure side as well. That's from property taxes and from our TERS administration fee. The reduction to the current tax rate would be three point seven million, again, revenue that would need to be realized on the operations side as well. You can see that here in a little bit more detail with the operations coming down to the effective and the current tax rate here. That debt service is locked in legally, that's what we have to assess to cover our current obligations. But you can see the breakout here between the true general fund tax levy and the TERS administration fee, which is a portion of that property taxes coming back to us in the form of a charge for service. So it's always important to take a look at the city portion of the bill, what is a resident going to see when they, when they look at their bill next year? We picked out several different examples. These are all in the transmitter letter within the proposed budget, but we'll pick one or two out here, the eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar home here. We'd see an increase of roughly fifty-eight dollars if there was zero percent growth on that property. That's four dollars and eighty-three cents per month. Looking at a house that increased a bit more with a higher value, we see one here with three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That's roughly a six point one increase to that taxable value. That's an increase of two hundred and thirty-nine dollars or just under twenty dollars per month. Worth reiterating that for seniors who qualify for the freeze, regardless of what the tax rate is, their taxes for the City of Pearland will not change. That's locked in regardless of their value or the rate. The total property tax bill, so the residents not only see the city portion, but a lot of other stuff that comes through on there, it really varies from tax bill to tax bill where you're living, but it's usually about twenty-five to thirty percent of the tax bill. The public education piece remains the largest portion, but we also see muds, as you can see on here, the mud qualifying actually for more than the city does, the county and other special jurisdictions that have taxing authority. We show here Alvin ISD, it's important noting, Mr. Pearson sent a note out to council this morning, but they are looking to come down roughly five cents on their property taxes. That's not reflected on what's on the board because that hasn't been adopted by their board just yet, but that was news this morning. That email also contained property tax adjustments for the other educational entities within, within our city. So backing up and looking at the big picture on the general fund side, we do have a balanced budget. We're looking at adding four hundred, I'm sorry, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That gets our fund balance to where it needs to be, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over that sixty-day threshold. Just as a reminder, we set that target for this fiscal year. We actually accomplished it early by doing it at mid-year to get us closer to that twenty-five percent goal over the next several fiscal years. This budget contains investment in our people who do the services every day that our residents value through a cost of living, addition of, addition of staff and other investments. This notably does not assume or rely upon any of the FEMA money that's coming in, hopefully at some time this month. We will bring that back to council and reallocate that out as a one-time expenditure separately, but wanted to keep it out of the operations budget so we don't come to rely on that for recurrent costs. We see, you know, the city continuing to grow, although we've seen development not where it was several years ago, which was extraordinary. We continue to see the population grow, the budget has grown in line with that. Total city expenditures, as noted on the board, are actually less than they were ten years ago relative to the total population base. Notably, we have opened a new, or will open a new fire station later this year. That's thirteen firefighters for one apparatus and one medic. That leaves one more for the following fiscal year, so we do plan another infusion of firefighters to cover that in twenty-one. Again, budget material is available online. You can see all the materials from our previous meetings here and a nice summation of the presented budget on August first in the video down below as well. I encourage everyone to check that out if you have not already. So zooming back out, looking at next steps, as Mr. Pearson mentioned, we have had three budget discussions in one tax rate public hearing, one and only budget public hearing. We do not need to take a record vote or anything tonight. We'll have residents comment if they would like. We'll be back here in a week for the first reading of the tax rate ordinance, the budget ordinance and the pay plan, along with the fee updates. And the same thing on the twenty-third, we'll get it adopted there. So with that, I'll hand it back to Mr. Pearson. Thank you.
Nothing formal to add, just I know some people walked in and just nobody's disappointed. I want to remind everybody that we just have this item on the council agenda tonight. The joint public hearing and the planning and zoning commission meetings have both been postponed and those will be rescheduled at another date. So if anybody's here for that, apologies, but tune into pearlandtx.gov and we'll have the date for that announced there. But turn back to you, Mayor and Council, to conduct the balance of the public hearing and we'll stand by for any questions or illustrations that you may need, sir.
Second, please, staff report.
It does.
Okay. Moving to our agenda to citizen comments, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. I've received two individuals that would like to speak on this matter. I'll call them up in the order which I received. First, apologize if I'm pronouncing this incorrectly, but Jeff Hunkeely, am I saying that correctly? Hunkeely. All right, there's a, there's a gap here. So if you could, please come up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the purpose of the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes. I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Hunkeely. I live at thirty-nine twelve Oakwood Drive North. We moved here a year ago, so I, moved here a year ago, so I regret that I haven't had time to review all the materials, but I've been spending the last week trying to look over some things and at least have some intelligent, if you will, comments after reviewing this. So when we moved here, when I got my tax record from where we moved from, it was quite a jump and I was quite shocked about that. So then I started doing some investigation. It seems like from two thousand six till today, my taxes for my property went up almost two thousand dollars, which, okay, over a fourteen-year period, that's not too bad. But from last year to this year, it's going up a thousand dollars. So fourteen years, two thousand, a thousand just from last year. I was looking at some of the propositions that I actually voted on, I researched them, and I understand for the budget, but I'm looking at this like animal services, thirteen million dollars to build this structure, fire department training burden building. I can't verify this, but in my research, someone had said that there actually is a facility, a training facility. It may not be this same kind, but whenever I voted on these proposals, I'm assuming that if someone would have said, hey, do you want this? When I offer my kids something, of course they want something, they want it. But if you would have said, hey, if you want this, your taxes are going to go up X amount. If you want this, they're going to go up X amount. I guarantee you, if the vote was taken based on that, a lot of people would have voted Whenever I did research on the homeowners, you generally stay in your house about seven years. I watched the video from the last meeting that y'all had and you talked about a TERS will expire on twenty thirty, but many people won't even be here. In fact, if my taxes keep going up like this, I may not be here to realize that effect. So I got to take that into consideration. And I know you're speaking that as a positive, but if I don't see that in my lifetime, then it really doesn't affect me. So whenever I looked at this, there's also going to be a cap of three percent, I believe, coming in November. So once that cap's in place, they can't raise the taxes beyond that, as I understand it. So if you can't raise it beyond that, then that means we got to tighten the belt strap and figure out how to balance this budget. And I know that balancing a budget, even in my home, is difficult. You have to make difficult choices. Some of the things you want, you can't get. I'm under the impression that you want to save that money when you have it, then you act on it. And I'm sorry, but I think the easiest thing to do is say, raise taxes. I wish I could do that to my boss. I want new things at the house, my wife wants a new refrigerator, I'm going to need some more money. My boss is going to say, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sir, can you wrap up your comments, please?
Absolutely. So with this, I just want to voice my concern that I am against the tax rate at this time. Like I said, seeing some of these menu items, I hope I can still afford to be in my house. Otherwise, I may go live in the animal shelter because it, well, thirteen million dollars, it might be nicer than my house.
Next, I have Ms. Becky Dunaway. Ms. Dunaway, if you would, please speak your name and address for the purpose of the record directly into the microphone.
I am Rebecca Dunaway. I live at twenty-three zero-two Cunningham Drive.
Ma'am, please keep your comments to three minutes and I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds. Please keep your comments to three minutes and I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left. Go ahead.
Okay. My street floods real bad. Willow Crest is the second oldest subdivision in Pearland and it's Halbert, Cunningham and Lynn. And they talk about raising the taxes. Well, I've been complaining about this. In nineteen ninety, my street was a dead end, they opened it up. When they opened up the street, they elevated that street sixteen inches. What happened to our impact laws? We have laws on the books that aren't being obeyed. I called out the city engineer, he came out, he met with eight of us. I've never heard from him again. Nothing has been done. My street keeps on flooding. They're, they have, the city has money for new signs for O-Town, they have money for lamp posts, they have money on trees, on Telephone Road, when those trees grow and burst through that cement, if they're going to have to go in and redo it, oh, but it's just money, it's no problem. I think money is being spent very frivolously and I'm not going to vote on any increase in taxes until this city council and everyone involved proves to me that they're responsible, they were spending the money responsibly, which I don't think they are. I'm tired of my house flooding. The house two doors down from me has flooded nineteen times since nineteen seventy-nine. I had to fight like an animal in Angleton. I had to request a jury trial because they wanted to go up on my taxes two hundred and forty percent. That is unacceptable, just totally unacceptable. The money is not being spent wisely in this town and I know that for a fact. I, they're tearing up the easement on many streets in Willow Crest and I asked the city workers, why don't you just go ahead and put in larger drains now while, while you're tearing everything up? No, we don't have money for that. There's no, the city does not have money for that. Well, if you have money for new lamp posts and new gas lights and, and trees on Telephone Road and a marble seat on McCard and Thirty-five, I think the drainage problem should be addressed. I realize Pearland's trying to build up their tax base and they're on every single corner, there's an urgent care, a credit union, a bank. We don't need five thousand urgent cares in this town and credit unions and banks. We need something done about the drainage. We need this city to pay attention to where they're putting their money because I don't think it's being wisely spent.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, that's all I have for people who have preemptively stated that they want to speak.
Okay, y'all. Yeah, go ahead, Ash.
If there's anybody else who would like to make a comment on the proposed tax rate, which we are about to adopt, now would be the time. Invite yourself up to the stage. For the second time, if there's anybody who'd like to speak as a matter of public record about the proposed tax rate, please come up to the microphone. Third and final time, anybody else who would like to speak as a matter of public record about this proposed tax rate adoption, please, please come up to the microphone. Looks like that's all our takers, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving to item number five on our agenda, council staff discussion, starting with the city council. I'll start with that, Councilmember Orlando, ready to comment, she make at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just had a few comments. First of all, I certainly hear the concerns of the people here in the room tonight. I hate getting my tax bill every year and opening it up and it always seems to be going in one direction, so I can appreciate the frustration there. The reality is that we, as a council, are legally obligated to uphold the vote of the people of Pearland. I was not yet on the council even when, when that was sent to voters, but that is something that was sent to voters in May. And of the five propositions, three of them were passed with over seventy-five percent of the vote. The fourth was, got two-thirds of the vote and the animal shelter that was mentioned passed a little more narrowly, but those all received the vote of the people of Pearland. So at this point, we are under a legal obligation to pay for those projects. And about the concern, about the knowledge of the trade-off between the projects and the rate, I certainly appreciate, just having run an election, that a lot of people aren't, don't have all the information and then that people have very busy lives when they're going into the ballot box and a million things to do. But that is not something that was a secret. So looking at this Houston Chronicle article, the second line, headline, "City Pearland considers eighty million dollar local bond election." I see here in the second line, "Voter approval of the proposed package is expected to increase property tax rate by just, to just under seventy point nine-two cents per a hundred dollar valuation." Sorry, the increase would be thirty, three point seven-five cents, said the city's director of engineering. So we're voting tonight on a three point two percent rate because we have conservative budget forecasts and we try to, we try to make sure that we're putting in conservative forecasts and making conservative choices and saving the taxpayers' money anywhere we can. But when this was proposed, it was proposed as these are the, these are five different bonds that would raise the tax rate by three point seven-five cents. We're coming to tonight with a increase of three point two cents and I will fight as each one of these five is implemented to, to knock costs off of those. But I have a moral, political and legal obligation to the voters who put me in office to vote or to put into action the packages that they approved. And I just want to make one other comment. It's something I've been saying in all these budget discussions we've had. I've said it during my campaign and I plan to say it again tonight when we had the public hearing that's now been postponed. But the real issue that we have is we want to have these world-class services, we want to have the awesome police that we have and go from a volunteer fire department to a fully-staffed fire department. And we don't have the same tax base as some of these other competitive communities to do that. And so the City of Pearland has a hundred and twenty-five thousand people, according to the twenty seventeen ACS survey. City of Sugar Land has eighty-eight thousand. But our, our taxable value that comes from businesses, our commercial taxable value is three point nine billion dollars. This is what we're assessing taxes to. We have three point nine billion dollars in commercial properties. Sugar Land has six point one billion. That's a city that's, as you saw, about thirty thousand people fewer than us. And so something that was going to come up tonight was something that had been heard while I was a candidate, and that is a mixed-use development right off of two eighty-eight, which would be condos, I think for a one-bedroom condo, the first, and this is not an apartment, this is a condominium building where people buy it, own equity, a one-bedroom was going to be two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year starting, and then there was going to be businesses there and other mixed-use development. And I, for the original proposal, that was anticipated to bring in five million dollars annually in property taxes. And it received kind of a chilly reception from the council up here. And there were certainly some concerns that needed to be worked through, but I was saying, hey, if we want to keep taxes low on our residents, we have to close that gap between other communities like Sugar Land. We don't have to, we can do that in a smart way, we can have that off of two eighty-eight in certain corridors and not, you know, in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So we can do that in a smart way, but ultimately, that's where the difference comes in. If we want to be able to have a lower tax rate for our people, and I certainly do, a lower tax rate on everyone, then we need to build that base and bring in those kind of businesses and be less hostile to bringing in those types of businesses in order for the folks in this room to get a lower bill each, each year. And like I said, I'm, I'm just getting started out here. I am your strongest ally in that. If anyone has examples of wasteful spending and things they want to get cut out of the budget, my email address is on the website, it's first initial last name at pearland texas.gov, and I am happy to have that conversation. But what this ultimately comes down to is we live in a country where people get to make choices about the kind of government they want and the kind of city that they have, and we have to, even if we didn't vote for, for each bond proposal, have to enforce that or we are subject, we are subject to violating the law. And I also want to say, we had one person at the last meeting for this, so I'm extremely grateful to see all you guys here. I think all of this would be better, our entire city government would be better if this many people showed up to every meeting and if we could have people passionate and fired up about how their tax dollars are being spent. I applaud that and hope you guys will, will come as often as you can. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't belabor points that have been made in other public hearings and have been offered to the public through, through the media coverage. I would say, barring a couple of, I remember Orlando's thoughts, we do try and balance our rate with the evaluation. Similar-sized city to us with respect to population like Kenny, Texas or Frisco, they have about the same amount of people, but they have double evaluation. The property, the price of the home is about twice as much as we can buy here, that means that their rate is about half as high in order for them to generate the same amount of money. Sometimes we get into those comparisons about our rate versus competitive cities and it looks like there's a delta, like, you know, ours is at point seven-four and theirs is at point four-three, and it looks as if the, the rate means that they're collecting less in taxes, but it's not, they're actually collecting more in taxes. They're just, they don't need a, that higher rate, as high a rate as us in order to be able to generate that revenue. I hear both of the individuals that came up and spoke, I hear y'all. I understand y'all's passion. I don't want y'all to think, regardless of how the vote goes today, that y'all's opinions aren't, aren't being incorporated in our decisions. I listen and talk to Pearland residents all throughout the year and try and do what I can to prioritize everything that y'all ask of us. The delta that we have is, there's a lot of services that we provide that a lot of citizens want us to improve, and I want to keep that promise about improving the services. But sometimes, a lot of times, improving those services means that we have to, we have to generate more revenue to make those improvements, particularly fire and EMS and police, or to hire more highly-trained, competitive officers. We've got to pay a high rate so that we can make sure that we get the best and the brightest, which we do, and make them stay here, which means we have to make sure that our salary stays competitive. So that comes directly out of the general fund, which is where your property tax goes. Same thing with the fire and EMS. We want to, we're actively moving very hard to try and get down our response times. Really, listening to what y'all told us is important to y'all. Response times for police, response times for fire, that's been a priority that y'all have told us. In order for us to do that, we've got to build more fire stations. In order to have built more fire stations, we have to be able to hire more firefighters in order to be able to populate those fire stations and have people ready to be there as quickly as we can possibly be. If you look at our general fund, our general fund is about fifty-fifty. It's about half property tax and half sales tax. It is not all property tax. But fire and EMS are funded out of that general fund. They are the largest expenditures with respect to personnel out of the general fund. It's really hard for us to make any significant gains in the tax rate without affecting those two departments. There are other departments that people don't get too very excited about and we don't, we don't hire as often on those, in those departments as probably we should consider. We need to add people to our permits department, our planning department, our engineering department each and every year, just to be able to keep up with the volume of work. We've been surviving with a more expensive mechanism through consultants for years and trying to hire people on to be able to lower that cost. But in the end, that's a recurring cost we have to keep up with. So it's, it's a challenge, it really is. I, I feel your pain in that none of us are exempt from what we, what we order up here. If we propose a higher tax rate, I have to pay it too. There's no exemption for me. You know, I have three kids, I have a, me and my wife both work, we have a, you know, a home that we're trying to keep. I have a small business, you know, I really value every dollar. So it pains me as much as it pains all of y'all. But when every, all the information comes in from staff, it really becomes a balance. Do we control the rate or do we continue to improve the services as y'all have asked us to? And that's, that's where the difficulty lies. And that's where the difficulty lies. So we start on this really, it's a year-round conversation. We started in earnest in February. We have a couple of public meetings just to be able to focus our attention on what it is we want to prioritize, and these meetings are the last, last ones kind of mandated to finally adopt the direction that we've been given. So I think at this point, you know, I think with the bond having passed, with the results of the, of the public meetings and the things that we know we need to add, I think that the tax rate is our most fair move. In the end, it is, it does come off as a tax increase. The value is not as significant as it sometimes is advertised, but it is painful to some and I appreciate that. In the end, I can't combat drainage issues because we just don't have the money to do it. There's, there is sometimes some confusion about how we fund certain things like improvements onto, onto State Highway 35, but not be able to spend that money on drainage. They're different funds. I can't use the money that we used for the improvements on 35 for drainage project. It just doesn't, it's, we're not legally allowed to move it around that way. The money that we're spending on the wastewater, or I'm sorry, the surface water treatment plant, it's a large value. We are borrowing that money from the state, and we can use it for that project and that project only. I can't take any of that money out and come and address your drainage problems. But I do want to try and focus on that. We're trying to come up with different ways to be able to fund drainage problems specifically to where we can attack them more aggressively, and we may be coming up with a plan here in the near future to be able to do that. So I appreciate everybody's comments. I know some, a lot of y'all reach out to us via email and through social media, and some of y'all just grab me when y'all see me out in the street and tell me your concerns. Please continue to do that. Please continue to let us know what it is that you're concerned about. That helps us to know what it is that we need to address. So thank y'all all for coming. Again, we'll be at this all year round. We've got two more meetings before we adopt the rate. I'd like you to come back out and continue to voice your opinion. Come back out in February, come back out at all the other public hearings and let us know what you're thinking so we can, we can have a good understanding of how to serve you best. That's all I have for now, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Hutton-Aders?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll echo what they said. I really, really, really appreciate everybody being here tonight. You know, we try our best to communicate with everyone, kind of out in the community that we all know, and we all have different groups that, you know, we've interacted with in the community. And it's always a chore and a task to get out and talk to people and get your feedback. So if you can actually come here and give us your feedback, I mean, it's always much easier for us to have a dialogue this way and be able to listen to you directly. So thank you for being here tonight. Couple of things I wanted to touch on. I wanted to, one of the things that Member Perez just said, you know, some of the confusion around where we can take money for certain projects and items and things like that. And I know that seems confusing. We've been really working hard to provide that clarity, provide that clarification for people to know that there are some things that we just can't take money, you know, for instance, like you mentioned the project on telephone or 35, of these roads with multiple names, you know, and that money comes from a specific fund that, you know, we have to use on specific items. And so that, I'm glad that he made that point. That's something that we've been working really hard to try to provide that clarity. In addition to that, something Member Orlando brought up about the legal obligation, you know, it's, we do have that obligation. The voters pass these bond items and, you know, it may, maybe this is a question for Darren. I don't know if, if we didn't go down that road, could we open ourselves up to potential lawsuits, other liability? I mean, what? I'm just kind of curious at this point.
The short answer to that is yes. I mean, there, when you have obligations that are already committed to and you don't have funding for it, then obviously you're going to create problems with funding those obligations, which then can throw you into default on contracts and things of that nature. So the short answer is yes. And it's all going to depend on, you know, ultimately what rate is adopted and what impact that would have on the budget.
Okay. So yeah, so we did say that it was going to be 3.75 cent increase. We came in 3.2, so we tried our best to keep it as low as possible. I just would hate to see a scenario where we opened ourselves up to that type of liability, taking on additional cost to do things that we in the end would probably have to do anyway. But another thing about, you know, those prices that were mentioned about how much we're spending on this project, that project, you know, those are the maximum allowed amounts. So I mean, on some of these projects, for instance, if you go back to the animal shelter, we've had this discussion multiple times where, you know, we can work through that process to make sure that, you know, we try to keep the costs in line or keep those corralled as much as we can throughout that process and be as fiscally responsible as we can in that process. And that's something that, you know, again, as we move down that, that road, we would invite the public to come in and be part of that discussion as well. I mean, your feedback is going to be valuable throughout this entire process. And then we talked about the 10-year realization, you know, doing things now that may be realized and we may get the funding for reimbursements for in the future. And I realize that that does seem like a long timeline, but in those scenarios, it's almost like if we didn't get in the line on some of these for the reimbursements that were down the road for us, then we would essentially be giving that money away to other, other agencies and other entities. And that's money that, you know, we want to use for the Pearland residents. That's money that we can get back in the future for the Pearland residents. So it's important, I think, for us to make those investments, you know, looking, looking down the road and trying to find, you know, I've been taking tours, I've been meeting with different staff and different departments and taking tours of like, you know, our emergency operations center, and we voted on some investments there, our traffic management and so forth, and talking to different departments about what they're doing. And, you know, I've been trying to find those areas where we can make the investments now to realize savings in the future. Some things, even like the fiber network that we've put in, has already realized savings. It's already allowed us to, to cut costs in certain areas to the tunes of thousands of dollars per year. The improvements we're making on the intersections, installing cameras, I've already talked to staff, they've said we can potentially use those cameras in the future to verify projects, work and stuff that's currently being done by adding additional staff to oversee those projects. So that also, that investment will save us in the future. I was even skeptical of an expenditure that we had for the installation of benchmarks, but I was speaking to our assistant director of engineering who said that installing those actually allows us to have a, there's, I guess, a rating system, and I wasn't aware of this, with FEMA for insurance, and that actually would save all Pearland residents a cost-saving on their FEMA insurance just off the bat. I mean, it just, it's a built-in to the assessment, the assessment for the rates. And I had no idea, but talking to them, trying to identify these things, you know, like I said, where we can make the investments now that actually do save you real money, real dollars, either now or in the near future. So that, all of these things are really important. We've been looking at, you know, I think all of us up here have been looking at those things and trying to make the best decisions that we can, with a balance of our obligations as well as the things that we project will positively impact the residents. And I did have one other question. I already made staff aware of this. If I could get a little bit more justification, specification on a specific position that was in the budget for the billing specialist, just so I can have some more clarification, please.
Sure, no. Clay, if you don't mind, I'd be glad to talk about that initially.
Yeah, I mean, but that's all out of the enterprise fund?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So if you might, it might be more appropriate since it's the property tax, if we can send that out, then we'll, we can talk about that when we talk about the enterprise funds next week?
Okay. All right. I'm fine with that. I guess, so aside from that, that's all I have, but I really, really appreciate everybody being here. And like Member Orlando said, I think most of us up here are really accessible, and I see some of you out there, I see your faces, and I know you interact with me, and so I appreciate that. Don't be shy and just keep, keep your comments coming and keep your feedback coming. And we do take it all in and we'll try to provide as much clarification, provide you as many answers as we possibly can. So, thank you.
More?
Thank you, Mayor.
So first off, I'd like, I'd like to ask a question of staff. So in reference to the bond, when will we actually see the tax increase that's going to be affected by, by the bond that was just passed?
So that'll start to phase in. There's a small portion, I believe, that we've included, but we've obligated ourselves, we've gotten after that, starting with probably 2021, you'll start to see the full gist of that.
And are we slowly but surely moving up to that total tax rate increase between now and 2021?
The projections we have right now is that the debt service is actually going to stay pretty flat for a few different reasons. We've refinanced and made savings on the existing debt service. The rates have been very low, so that's a good time to make these investments. So they're below some of those projections. So there's one slide there we can bring back up if you want, but for at least the next two years, best information we have is that the debt service, even with bringing on those 2021 projects, should maintain pretty steady.
Okay. So I'd like to clarify for people in the audience or anybody listening via the internet. So the, the tax rate increase really is the, on the debt service side, not so much on the general fund side? Is that correct?
It's actually, the increase mostly on the operations, the O and M side versus the debt.
Sorry, the O and M, not the debt.
Yeah, I know what you meant.
Sorry.
Yeah. It's up like half cents, is that right, McCurner? On the debt?
Yeah. Can we put this up? If you look at this slide here, the last two columns on that chart are the projection amounts. So you can see the yellow portion is for the debt, the debt piece of it. And then this here illustrates the difference. The change in the top for the O and M is just under 3 cents, 2.7 cents, and then just under half a cent for the debt piece.
So this year's increase really didn't have anything to do with the bond, then?
It's a combination of both of those things, so. But you're right, proportionally, it's mostly the O and M and that side, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify so everybody understood what we were doing here. And just, just to let everybody know, anytime there's a bond, it's going to come with a tax increase potentially. That brings me to 2007, we did a bond and the tax rate was not increased to pay for that bond. Every project that was done from 2007 was paid for without that tax increase. Therefore, there was a lot of things that had to be crunched, skipped, missed, overwent to pay for those projects in the bond. As you heard earlier, we're obligated to do all of those projects in the bond. It's not, we have a choice, oh, we can't, you know, we can't afford it, so we're not going to do it. That's not the case. We have to do those projects. So I've always said that, since I've been on council, I always felt like we were behind, we're always fighting something, you know, where we were always behind. We, and also I feel sometimes that we move too quick on things. We're always trying to do things quicker than I think we need to. We didn't get in a situation where we are overnight, and we're not going to get out of it overnight. It takes time. But that being said, we are continuing to grow at a fast rate. We're now to the point where a lot of the stuff that we have, excuse me, has to be increased. Shatta Creek Ranch, I mean, it wasn't very old and we already had to increase the wastewater treatment plant out there. That was $3.6 million to do that. So I mean, we're, we're fighting, we're fighting to provide the services, we're fighting to keep the tax rate low, and honestly, it's not easy. But I do hear your concerns, and they're valid concerns. I also have concerns that we may be one of those cities where we price our, price ourself out of the, out of the market. There was a gentleman here at the last meeting that was talking about a thing of Cinco Ranch, where people are fleeing out of there like crazy because the tax rate has increased so much that they can't afford to live there anymore. I have that same fear here. But to assure you, we are doing the best that we can to provide the services, to keep the tax rate low, and it's valid. And as to answer Councilmember Orlando's question, I'm not a big proponent of apartments. I never have been. This apartment complex that was supposed to move in there, there was another one that was supposed to move in called the Ivy District. Anybody remember that one? Shatta Creek Ranch? It's still not built yet, but it went from multiple retails to nothing but apartment complexes. All the retail and commercial was taken out because there wasn't a market here for it. So until we can get a market here to get more business in here to offset some of the tax base, it's going to be difficult. And I'll just say one other thing, and it's not really related to this, but it is, with going up on the base rates for the water meters and pushing all of that to the businesses, that's not fair. And that doesn't send a message that we want business in our city. So it's kind of hard to offset the tax base with businesses when you're sending a message to businesses that we want you to fit a majority of the bill.
That's for both of us.
Thank you for everything that's been said, Mayor. Time to get down here.
I do have a few items here. Yeah, what we're looking at tonight is, is looking at, on the tax rate. And in the tax rate, what we're looking at is two areas, one being a rollback rate, which has been recommended by the city, and that will increase the operation man and maintenance to .3068. And then the debt service part of that will be 7344, which is a total of 7412 on a tax rate. The effective rate uses the same thing on the debt service, the same amount, but the effective rate up there is .2812 versus 3068. And the difference being in the rate there for the effective tax rate, that generates the same amount of revenue that was raised in the previous years. Going back and looking at some of the things on here, you know, we've, in order, what the staff is telling us, that if we don't go with the rollback rate up there and go ahead with the 30.68 up there, that in order to do it at the effective rate, we would have to come in, cut 2.7 million out of the general fund budget. My question is mainly in the staff side on there, that, you know, some of the things that really went up this year is looking at the tax rate increases is actually an increase of 3% over last year, but the taxable went up quite a bit. I think it was 8.5 billion, which is about a 4.3% increase over the prior year, 2018. And that was 8.1 billion through there. So there brings up concerns of going in and looking at the budget. And I'm leaning more of going in and looking at the effective tax rate based on some other things in, I guess, you know, staff can come in and correct me when we go through some of these. But looking at additional funds over that, we say in the budget with creating the ESDs that we'll get another $776,000 in 2020 for that. Previously, we had been doing, providing police, fire, and the ambulance service to outside the taxing area or outside the city limits. But now with them, the emergency districts have been set up, we will be, you know, reimbursed for a portion of that. So to me, I think, you know, that's a portion that can be recalculated in our budget. There's some money out there right now with FEMA and the state of coming in. We're not too sure about that, but going back and looking at the budget, it's not calculated in our budget this time. It's 1 point, well, roughly 1.5 million dollars. But their statement in the budget says it's a highly likelihood that we'll get it. So that would be rolled back into the budget through there. So there's some things that I think, you know, that, you know, some of the things that we come in the budget side and the state, I mean, the city does on that, is making some of the adjustments through there. They're projecting what the tax rate may be that comes in through there, that's needed on there. It may be something that looking at, okay, we've got this much in sales tax, how much we're going to get this next year? And that's a guess, you know, to do that. But we also look at through there that we know that the amount of development going on in the city of Pearland is not what it was two or three years ago. So some of that activity is going to, going to slow down through there. So that to me, you know, is something that we should be looking at. Of course, this is to set the tax rate on here, but we'll have two more meetings with the budget side. So. So what I did was go in and take a look at, okay, if we did go through and get the effective rate rather than the rollback rate and save a little bit of money there, there's some items that we could actually come in and do in order to roll that, use that effective rate rather than the rollback on there. And so there's some items that just good management purposes, I think, and, and we do have good management staff for sure. But going in and taking a look, you know, it's kind of, you know, you, you want some needs, kind of get mixed up, what you can afford and what you can't afford. And so I think, you know, at some point, and we have done in the past, this is not my first time to work on a budget with the city. And so there's opportunities to come in and really look at some of these areas here and say, do we need to have that much money projected in here? Do we need to spend that kind of money? You know, and, and I brought up one this last time was, was with seminars and conferences and, and membership dues and stuff like that. It's about $1.3 million roughly. I mean, could we adjust that by $500,000 and downward and manage it a little bit more and a little bit better rather than, than spending at 1. roughly 1.3 million on there? The other thing too, of course, you know, anytime you say anything about cutting, anything with the city, the first thing that rolls out, okay, we can't, we can't, you know, hire police, fire, EMS and, and, and those agents. But that's, that's not, you know, our deal here at City Council is health, safety and welfare of the city is what it totally amounts to. So I mean, we could, we could come in and, and we could do the hiring of the police department, fire department, the EMS and the cyber technician that you had mentioned to do that, but still look and see what value that the other six positions that we were going to do, is it worth doing it? Can we, you know, go without doing it at some point in time? So the only thing we're talking about right now is, is that tax rate, but that's for operation and maintenance and maintenance, and that's in your general fund budget. The other part that we'll have to look at on there is our enterprise fund, which is your water wastewater. And that's projected to go up 5% this next year, your water rates. And then the next two years after that, 9% each year after that. So that's, that's going to be a different subject that we do, but right now it's what we're looking at the effective tax rate. I think there's some opportunities that we can come in and, and, you know, do something. It won't cut it that much, but it'll cut it some on there, on the, on the rate. And, and, you know, if we actually get some of these other dollars in, we can come back in and add those in as they come in later on, those dollars come through. But right now, we're just estimating what it is, but on there. But I think, you know, that, the, you know, to cut it down and go to the effective rate rather than rollback rate, I don't think it's a big jump in order to get to that, that point to come in and do that. So like I say, if, if you do it with a rollback rate, you're talking 7412. If you do it the other, 7157. So, but it does make a little bit of difference in the overall tax rate. So I'm sure that's going to be shot back and forth, so.
Jacopita Report?
Yeah, I'm through, Mayor.
I just want to share a few thoughts with you, and that is, Pearland is the third largest city by population to Gulf Coast area, which makes us a rapid growth city. We're, year 2000, we only have 34,000 people. Today we have almost 120, 135,000. And there's a lot of difference between a high-growth city like Pearland and those cities that are stable and low growth. Pasadena is a good example. They're, they're pretty well built out, have all their infrastructure in, and they have relatively low growth in there, so the tax rate's pretty low. And all the cities in, in Gulf Coast area or in that capacity, the older cities, if you would. And I promise, like most of the new cities, which are usually high-growth cities. If I say law, we have to provide the health, safety and welfare of the citizens. Now, if we could grow it, I don't think our tax rate would change too much until we catch up on the, the odds and ends of providing for the people who are here. But when you have new people coming in, at the rate we're getting them, it's, we have to usually build your, your streets, your water lines, your sewer lines. And what that does is puts us in a little bit different category. But I think we're building because we're such a quality city to start off with. People would be coming in at this rate. And we, we find that as we grow, our new citizens have a positive contribution, yes. And, and good companies are coming in, but we still have to provide fire, EMS, police. There's, there's different departments, parks department and library department. We still have to provide those services for the people because that's why they come here and that's what they want and are required. So we're, we're kind of in a, in a, in a phase, I think, once at some point, when we build all the water lines, we're going to have to build and all the streets and the waters, water, water plants that we had put in. And last past Saturday, I tended to help watch the ribbon cutting of Fire Station One off of Card Road in Old Alvin. And we're in the process now up west of town, Fire Station Eight. These cost money. You want, you want that kind of service, so you would be coming here in the first place. And that's one of the reasons why I moved here. And so it's, it's, it sort of looks like you ought to be able to control your expenditures in your city. I think a bad example is somebody has a couple of kids and then has quintuplets. All of a sudden, you've got to expend a lot more money to take care of those kids. So we're kind of in that box right now as we go up, but we're, we're insisting that it be quality, something that you'll be proud of or you wouldn't have come here in the first place. And it's something that as we grow, we'll start, we'll start stabilizing. And I think, I don't see that in the time of the future because we have quite a, but I don't think we'll have any more large pieces of property for a large, huge subdivision. There are no more adequate races coming in Pearland, but there are little pockets apparently. And we had, they found, some people found a pocket out west of town, way outside of our water sewer service, but in a muddishing. And we've had to go out and put in a water sewer, EMS, make sure they got fire service. Police department has to end to take care of them. So it's a complicated system in that respect. And our job is to try to make sure that we meet the health, safety and welfare requirement of the state, of the state, or we're going to be in bad trouble. And also, I keep the prices down as much as possible. And it's a, it's a real challenge to do that. But we're, I think we're making some good progress in it. And our tax rate has not jumped. There are a lot of local cities around here that have taxes, there's not much of a city here. And you, south of us a little way, and just have 80 cent tax rate. And they don't have anything that we have in Pearland nearly. But I guess my point is, we're trying to be as shugal as possible because I pay taxes too, all the council does. So it's, it's something we have to make sure we balance and provide health, safety, welfare and the products that work for our citizens as well as try to keep the tax rate as low as possible. And I think we've worked awfully, awfully hard to make that happen. And I think also that this, this budget is not that for all. It's, it's not going up much. But as we stabilize, I think that our, our tax rate will stabilize along with it. I just wanted to share that with you because my daughter asked me about that the other day, so that's what I told her. So thank, thank you for being here. And as we, at this point, we will move to staff discussion.
Nothing to add, sir. Appreciate it.
You feel like you've completed most of it?
Yep, we'll prepare things up for the...
John did a good job of making, making it very clear for us. And in my agenda, that was, that was item five. Item six says I can adjourn this meeting at this point. Well, thank all of you being here, your thoughts are, we're looking at them, trying to work with you. Wonderful to have such quality citizens like you are, so thank you for being here tonight. At this point, I will adjourn.